All. Thank you. Calling meeting to order. Standard statement is the meeting is being recorded. If any other persons are recording the meeting, you must notify me as the chair at this time. Anyone else recording? You let me know. Seeing, hearing none. Thank you. Um, before we do the second agenda item, just want to, as we've been doing since we've gone to hybrid, uh, do introductions just for the folks, um, who are here virtually and for anyone who would be watching the recording, I'll start. My name is George Tolumsas and I'm the board chair.
My name is Sarah Brown and I'm a member.
Peter McKiver, member.
Eric Torre, Director of Planning and Development for Greenfield.
Jeff Sauer, member.
Victor Michelle, a member.
Thank you. And next item is the approval of minutes for April 4th. Motion to approve. Still moved?
Second. Um. I was just wondering if comings and goings, uh, we, I, we might have discussed that at the last meeting. I'm just not sure that needs to be in the minutes.
What do you refer to?
Um, just new members, acknowledgement of the new members.
Oh.
And, and that Chuck had left. I thought I remember talking about that, but.
We did. Yes, we've acknowledged his, um.
It's not a big deal. I'm not even sure if it's necessary, but.
Yeah, typically stuff like that I don't put in meeting minutes.
Okay.
Just for business.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
I had, um, on the second page, we had a long paragraph and like a couple of things. One is, um, about the seventh line, I think it is, where it says, uh, the comment I had made about the, um, uh, access points to the site and it says one for the drive-through. And, uh, there wasn't really in their original plan, a, um, access point for the drive-through. Um. Uh, but I wanted to say that seems to be referring to the, um, uh, one further from Route 2. So I wanted to say one for the exiting, uh, one for exiting rather, and the other goes to Route 2, Route 2 for entry and exit. Because that was their original, um, plan. It was only exiting, um, at the, uh, subway one and it was entering and exit at the one nearest, closer to Route 2.
Got it.
And then one other, uh, I want to expand on one thing and that's a bit further down, um, which says the board discussed the site traffic starts in the red flow and then it says Tolumsas suggested the condition. Can you see what that is?
Yep.
Let's see. So at the end of that sentence, um, I want to add, because it was discussed to reduce the risk of cars entering the site backing up on, onto Route 2. Use the risk of cars entering the site backing up onto Route 2. Cause that was, I know the big, the main rationale. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other comments on the minutes? No objection to those edits? All in favor of approval? Anyone objecting? Anyone? Thank you. Yep. Thanks. Next item is nomination and election of a vice chair. Uh, Chuck has been mentioning the vice chair and resigned from the board. So we have a bit over six months till our annual reorganization, which is in January. So it seemed prudent to have a vice chair.
Actually, it's July 1st, the first meeting in July.
Is it?
Yes.
So weird because the, the terms end in December.
Also the terms used at, they all used to end June 30th. Why they're doing these December appointments, I have no idea. For years, for 10 years, it was always June 30th is the end of an appointment date.
Right, right, right.
Now they're adding December, but the rewards, rules and regulations say the first meeting.
Right, right. So, so some commission committees or boards do it in January and some do it in July and we've been.
Within the same board. Some board members in this board is December, some is in.
Right.
Ends June 30th.
That's why I was forgetting that we always send reorganization in July.
Yes.
So that's actually pretty close. So, okay. But it seems prudent to have a vice chair.
Yes.
Anyway.
Still a good thing to do.
Um, so, uh, floor is open for nominations. Robert's rules does not require a second for nominations and it can be nomination of others, nominations yourself. If it's a nomination of someone else, just check with that person if they're willing to serve and then we'll see who is up there and then we can proceed. Are there any?
Was it mean to be the vice chair? Just to back up?
Uh, yes, that's primarily if the chair isn't present.
Correct. Yes.
Is there anyone interested?
Are you interested?
Not particularly.
Would you be willing to do it?
I have a lot on my plate, but I, I could do anything needed.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Is anyone else interested?
Well, I'd like to nominate Sarah.
Okay. I don't want to do it.
Okay.
Sorry, guys.
I'm too new. So I don't want to stick my toe in.
So when the, in July, when, i- is the organization required that everybody switch seats or is it just refreshing?
It's just, I mean, they can vote in the same people every time, but it's just a process starting. They got to do the nominations.
So thank you for volunteering. Anyone else interested or want to ask someone else? Gone around, okay, all in favor?
Formerly nominates it because he volunteered, but no one nominated.
Okay. Well, I thought it was self-nomination. So.
Oh, I'll nominate John if needed.
I believe so. Yeah. All right. Very good. And, uh, so all in favor of Jeff as vice chair? I, very good. Anonymous. Thank you.
Have to understand it kind of.
You don't have to be something.
All right. Onto discussion items. And, yeah, we're good. Appreciate some context of this next one. It's kind of unusual in my experience. Um, it's a comparison of proposed development options for housing on parcel R 04-53.
Yes, it is a very strange, uh. Mark Leonard, he owns some land near Gil Road. And he wants to do something with that land. So he brought in two sets of plans and I can tell him, I think he believed that the ex qualified as an A and R plan, which they don't. I've been close, you know, got a professional surveyor seal on it. It's got to be certain size. And so this is far from an A and R plan. That's better registered land surveyor prepares. So I contacted Mark Leonard and said, these are not A and R plans, but the board would be more than happy to discuss which option they think is best in terms of housing at this location. And so whatever the board indicates it likes, he'll probably go back and try to do that type of development.
So he's got two very different options and he's asking for reaction, preliminary reaction.
Preliminary reaction to these different types of, and if you go through, then we need a copy. I got several extra copies.
Sure.
Thank you. There's one set.
It's Eric.
There's another set. Right. Welcome. And there we also need one. And, uh, there is one exit.
I will take it. Thank you. So I don't have to use my magnifying glass.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, this was a very fuzzy.
Very hard to.
The image was very fuzzy. My, okay.
Well, if we look at the first one, uh, which looks like multiple lots, strange looking lots.
I'm totally confused by the little lines and strips and connections and stuff.
Access to this property.
Maxing out, using up the whole site.
So I'm assuming that the use of flag lots here is to make up the minimum acreage for that area.
And the lot size.
Yeah, actually that is why he's doing it. Um, but they're not flag lots because they have direct frontage on the roadway.
Okay.
So they're not actually flagged lots. These oddly shaped lots.
Got it.
Uh, there's a definition of lot width in Greenfield zoning ordinance. The lot width says that the structure of the house, the, the house has to be setback, the distance, the front yard setback. But during that, that the frontage has to go back to it. So if you're in the, let's say you're in the RC district, 200 feet of frontage, that 200 feet has to come down all the way where the buildable lot is where the house is. So that you don't have string beam, as they call them in Texas, blocks, weirdly shaped blocks. I don't like this layout at all because if land ownership, if somebody owned that land, the property disputes is going to be in that situation.
Lots.
Um, a lot. So I recommend against this one completely.
So I assume that there's a minimum requirement of what? Under point, about point four acres for the lots on that particular property?
I would say that Gil Road, this is the RC district unless it happens to be in the GC district, but even if it is, it has to go with the RA. So yeah, that's a good question. Because on.
There's no gap right here.
There's got to be some technical reason why these are done this way.
So this kind of.
Why these are what again?
This is why, you would, this is not a rational layout. So it must be, they had to achieve a certain lot size, wanted to cluster the homes on the left side, the south side of the wetland zone. And I've, I've seen plans like this when developers are trying to prove that they can build single family or that they can't build a single family. It's more of a technical exercise than an actual proposal. We can, we can call their bluff and say, yeah, we love this, build it. I just, I'm just curious why, what about the zoning or the, the rules led to this type of strange layout of some of its lots?
It's really, I think, two reasons. One, actually the main reason now that I remember him saying it. So first, let me get back to the lot width. So the lot width, he actually meets that definition and still results in oddly shaped lots.
Yeah.
Right. So that lot definition didn't work in this case. Still a weird shaped lot. So he's doing it because there's a brook there that has a riverfront protection area along it. That's the green line.
Right.
And he's not going to cross that brook, but he needs the, needs the meat land area. So he's creating these weird things to have this land area meet it. So he can meet the land area environment.
For each parcel.
For each parcel. And that's why it's oddly shaped.
So this kind of goes into one of my questions that I was going to ask the board. Um, he's got two options, single family, multifamily. Do we have any? Do we look into what the impact of both is on the city? So let's use the example of multifamily. Multifamily is higher density. So let's assume that there are some units in, that eight apartments, eight, 24 apartments.
And there's also this last two, the other.
Okay. Well, let's say it's 24 apartments. So that's 24 families. Let's say each one has two kids. Now we've got 48 kids. Do we look at the impact? Okay. Now we've got 48 kids and the school system handle 48 kids? Is this really what we want to do? Or do you want to go more to the single family? I think the town needs more single family, affordable single family, small starter. I don't think we say, well, this one we, it works, but this doesn't work for the town because it's putting burdens on more traffic, more, more, uh, kids in the schools, more this, that and the other. He'd rather go back in this way and say, Mr. Jones, why don't you develop both sides of the property? Put single family on both sides. Instead of trying to make this weird stuff, obviously he can use the whole piece of property, right? Cause he's using it. Why doesn't he try and use both sides and go back to the single family? Again, give us some housing, not put any undue burdens on other thing. I don't, but again, I don't know that we have those every, but I don't know if we consider that as a board when we look at this. What is the impact? Not only just, um, looking at here, but in the big picture. So that would be, that's one of my thoughts. Do we do that?
Is that sure? So. And I just was, person just here. So, so how many units is he proposing? 24 plus?
20.
Yes.
There's another two on the opposite side.
Yeah.
28.
28. So the major development review regulations say if you have 50 or more dwelling units being proposed, then major development review kicks in and then to special permit and special things have to be done, additional studies. This does not kick in major development review. The state of Massachusetts cannot collect impact fees like most of the country. Uh, that collects impact fees. Like for example, I worked with Windham, New Hampshire. The first thing that I developed, what is residential subdivision is pay into an impact fee for the schools. Instant, uh, because of the children impacting the schools.
Right.
Massachusetts can't do that and doesn't do it. They call it a tax against the law.
But we could ask the school board, what would be the impact of X amount of kids on your, on your thing?
But if the board can't say though, uh, this is going to have this impact here. So we, we can't approve your, your development.
Can't say, no, we know it's potentially might have an impact.
Yeah, we're not, we just have to deal with the impact.
Did he indicate, um, the size of these units, of these one bedrooms, multi-bedroom?
Indicated that the single family would be market rate housing.
But I mean, the apartment.
Multi-family, I don't recall. I think they would just be market rate apartments is what he said.
But, but, um, Victor was talking about, um, families and I'm wondering how many of these are, you know, one bedroom versus.
Oh, the breakdown of, uh.
Yeah, like one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom.
Think if I remember him saying it. That's a good question. One and two fam, I mean, one and two unit, one and two bedroom units.
Is there a, any relief that would, so I know these aren't official, we're not doing an official site plan review or anything, but I mean, if it's by right, you know, just in terms of what our, our purview is, like, we have more leverage if they need relief from things than if it's just making us do this with or without certain types of approval. So are both of these compliant with, with underlying zoning as, as drawn as best you can tell?
So multifamily is allowed in the general commercial zone. Cause that's where it's located on the map. And that's why he has 65 feet of frontage because residential uses in the general commercial zone must follow the requirements of the urban residential zone, which is 65 feet of frontage, $8,000 square feet of land area.
And this is part of the area we had originally recommended being switched to industrial.
Yes.
And then we've cut that off.
And that was cut off, um.
With the idea of.
Personal housing.
Personal housing.
What did you say the square footage requirement was? 8,000?
It's only 8,000. So I'm not really sure why he has.
These are all 20, $200.
Not really sure why. I invited Mr. Leonard to come here and explain his development to us, but he's not here.
So you don't really have any kind of scale on this.
But multifamily is allowed in the DC by, uh, special permit from the zoning board appeals. Uh, and there's a section in zoning ordinance that.
These actually meet the requirement. We assume these are, it says 116 feet to this, this middle line. Let's, um, I'd take that 16 from that, probably 100 by 65, which is 6,500 square feet, which means your minimum requirement for single family, yeah?
8,000 square feet?
Or 8,000, or 600.
Okay.
So multifamily is allowed in that zone, um, section 7.2, the zoning ordinance covers the way it has to be done. It can't be more than 24 dwelling units per building and it can't be, it has to be one inch away for, per six units within that building. Things like that. It's distance between dwelling. So the site is dictated partly by our own zoning ordinance. How it must be complied with. But it is a lot. Oddly enough, if this other option with the strange looking lots was utilized and these were single family homes he's proposing, then it would actually need a special permit, just like multifamily housing. Because single family homes require special permit approval from the ZBA in the GC district. We try to make it by right because, uh, all the residential districts and in the general commercial, two and three families are allowed by right. Well, not single families, but city council didn't go for that. And so they still require a special permit.
This bizarre looking first option. Um, I looked at that and I think, you know, seeing the site, I mean, it's all wooded and, um, so it made me think, so we're just talking about cluster development. I'm thinking, how does this compare with cluster development?
Cluster development, uh, that is not cluster development right there.
No, I know, but I mean, how could cluster development?
Cluster development probably could be used in this case. And, um, I did mention it to him, Mr. Leonard. You could concentrate the lots up here. It looks like you could easily meet 8,000 square feet of land per lot. You don't understand that. And then these, this whole area could be set aside as permanently protected open space.
That's impossible.
Yeah. It'd be a nice cluster development.
Why wouldn't, okay.
And the other thing I should point out to, to the board, um, and Jeff knows well, we're doing a housing study for the city. Jeff's firm is doing it. And, um, that's going to help Mr. Leonard make a decision too, because we'll know basically what type of housing the city needs and the goals of the city, what kind of housing they would want and try to bring in. So, um, I mentioned that to Mr. Leonard. No, actually I didn't mention that to him. So I need to mention that to him, that there's studies going on as well before he makes a decision.
I, I mean, just we're, we have been talking a lot about increasing numbers of units generally. And certainly the multifamily would have more units than the single family homes. It's right near, uh, a grocery store, which is, uh, in planning, um, if it were, um, and it's served by the, uh, FRTA, by public transportation, which has a stop. Stop and chop. Um, just from the point of view of it being, you know, a lot of housing further out from downtown, but it has those advantages. In some ways it seems like it's more concentrated. There's some benefits as far as units and like I said, the, the being so close to, um, uh, a store and then the transportation.
Some of the person. Yeah, I think the general commercial zone is appropriate for farmer complexes.
Just to clarify for, for Mr. Leonard, um, it seems like this would go before the ZBA in both uh, plan study one and study two?
Correct.
Okay. And the only scenario in which this would come directly before the planning board would be if it's a cluster development?
Yes.
Okay. Just to clarify why this isn't, I mean, maybe the owner of the land doesn't understand the process quite yet, but just like what we're looking at is not something that the planning board would actually be able to approve under the zoning or the way the town works.
And you make a very good point and exactly, I'm going to point that out to Mr. Leonard. This board did review it, but the only way they would ever see it is if it's a cluster development. Otherwise it's on a board appeal. So maybe the zoning board appeals would have the same.
Yeah. So our comments are not necessarily helpful directly because it's not our, it's not the process.
For, you know, the overall thoughts of the city and the types of housing it would like to see these houses. So any board would provide valuable.
Yeah.
You're designing a cluster development format? What are you calling?
Sure. Cluster development is an old terminology for it, but it's, uh, still used in our ordinance. We call it open space slash cluster developments. And basically what it is, is, uh, is, it's a, it's not like your standard subdivision that takes up an entire piece of land cuts it up into lots and roadways and every piece of land is used. There may be some training, adhesives or something, but cluster development allows you to make the house, house lots smaller and closer together, but you have to save a big section, like 50% of permanently protected open space.
Okay.
Um, and so it's beneficial to the developer, less infrastructure to build, roadways and utilities and all that sidewalks. And it's good for the houser, housing, you know, the owner houses because it used to be that open space next to housing, people thought it would bring their values down. Now it brings up people's values of the houses. So they get increased, it's just valued by having open spaces in their house.
Okay. So would you make that suggestion to Mr. Leonard? That you redesign this and look at maybe flip flopping where he builds a single family houses and such and puts the other piece under permanent protection?
Thing about the cluster development option, option was it nice because you can mix single family with multifamily under the same cluster development option. So he can mix, have a mix of.
Half a dozen houses.
Yeah. You could mix them all up and whatever works best. And so it's odd that the board, if I'm hearing correct, has kind of reached somewhat of a consensus that they would prefer out of a third option, which is cluster development.
I think there's, I'm looking at the aerial and there's utility easement. It looks like it goes right here. Can't quite tell. He didn't draw it on his plan.
There it is.
What does that mean?
There's a.
Oh, oh, right, right, right.
Right here.
Right. I knew there was somewhere there.
In the middle of the lot, you're saying?
Basically where the wetland, the, the green line should be a right here.
Oh, yeah. You said in the green line as a right of way.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know whether it's not officially.
Maybe he, they used wetland flags to demarcate the utility easement instead of a, it's hard to believe that's a meaningful wetland. So.
Well. If it was the utility, even the line would be straight. Wouldn't be.
Yeah, that's true.
Right. So therefore it can't be.
Do you think that this is the, do you think the, the utilities tend to own their land in this type of setting? And maybe they're.
They don't own the land, but you, uh, they have easement rights and you can't put any buildings or anything underneath it except maybe parking or.
Could you get cluster development credit or not that you could ever build on that land, but to say that it's like, that's sort of what this is.
I think that's what he's getting at here is that maybe he can't build under the high tension line, but you can claim the land.
Exactly. That's what this drawing is, is doing. Cause it's, it's a nonsensical, uh, it's, it's an exercise in just, yeah, just doing the math to show I could build seven houses here, eight houses here. This is what it would have to look like. Let me do a cluster. And as far as the experience of, of it all, it's going to look the same, but you just don't have to have these funny lots out here.
Maybe he didn't know it's a cluster because he was trying to make this state 500 square feet. So maybe if you told him it could be a cluster, it just wouldn't be.
Just, yeah. Well, this is sometimes what you have to do first. You have to demonstrate that you could build it conventionally. And then they say, well, we don't like that. We'll let you do a cluster. So you can take all this wasted land and make it.
Right.
Dedicated to something. So my feeling on this one is that I don't, I'm not sure that green space is all that useful. I'm of a mind that we need as many housing units as possible. That's my personal opinion. I'll have.
No, I disagree. I like the single family board.
I am doing, uh, housing, so my firm is doing a housing study for the, the city. So I'll have to make sure I'm speaking for my own, I'm also a resident. So I'm speaking. I don't have a vested, I don't have a vested interest in either respect in what happens on the site, you know, financially and everything. So, but from personal perspective, we just, everywhere needs more housing and we need as much as we can get. So and, and to George's point, it's next to the grocery store. It's on transit. This is, this is, I think, before I was on the board, this is, this was what was envisioned for the site. This is why it was carved out. I forget the process by which that happened. So I think just in, as a general principle, maximizing the density would be my preference in terms of the design. And there's lots we could talk about, but maybe that's not the kind of feedback that he's interested in.
So when you say maximize, so you're, you're, you're in favor of the multifamily that has a higher number of.
Yeah, you both sides. I'm not sure why he's not developing this side. Unless he's, you know, multifamily on one side and single family on the other side.
Yeah, definitely. If you, if that's buildable and it's not under these power lines or something else.
Yeah. No, see it was, uh, it's labeled with wetland flag. So, and it kind of looks like a wetland park. The northern part of this, uh, it's option two, wetland algae, when that flag, so this, he's keeping 20 feet away from that.
Is there a reason why you would feel the need to choose one side over the other? You said that 50 units is a major development review of trigger.
Yes.
Is there a minimum lot size per unit for multifamily? That's why he's capped out at 28?
Multifamily typically gets done in one lot. It's not multiple lots. It's just one lot on multifamily and it has to have a certain land area based on the number of humans.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah. So like.
So.
Per, per unit.
Yeah. Um, I think it's, if you look at the zoning ordinance, table of dimensional requirements in your footnotes.
Correct. Close caption recording on? At you or is that somebody else?
I think it's good.
Correct.
Yeah. Thanks for pointing that out. So a unit, so if you have multifamily on a lot, you start off with the assumption that it's, you need 10,000 square feet for two units. And then you add, depending on the zone, if you square, a certain amount of square footage per additional unit. I think GC, I don't remember the GC. I remember the other ones. It's additional 2,000 in the RA. It may be additional 2,000 square feet in the GC too, if anybody has his own orders with him. Looks at the table of dimensional requirements at the very back of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
It's C.
That number are we looking for?
It would be the appendix, the very end of the ordinance. Yeah. After the table of uses, you will see it right here. It's called the table of dimensional requirements in, uh, in the lot area footnote number one. So if you read footnote number one.
The first number is for all principal uses in single family dwellings. Is that what you want?
Yes.
The second number is for two family dwellings. For three family and multifamily structures, there shall be the minimum requirement for two family dwellings plus an additional increase in lot area for each additional unit equal to the following.
What's the GC?
GC, 4,000 square feet.
Uh, so it's double in the RA. So 4,000 square feet per additional unit necessary.
So a six unit building would need four times 50, over 40,000 square feet.
Um, hold on.
160,000. Square feet approximately. Yeah. Of all these.
I looked at the parcel on, uh, the GIS map and the measurement from King Road to the edge of the New England power right of way. To the edge of the New England Power right away. Is two hundred and eleven feet. Thereabouts. Uh, which is about where you look at the. Uh, the.
You add up.
Lot sizes of house six, seven and eight on the first drawing. Put two hundred and eight feet right around. The edge of the wetland flag. So the right away. Those power lines are right about that. And they run, that's the, just for a visual, that's the set that run behind Stop and Shop. So if you're at Stop and Shop, it's the power lines that come back across and then continue out towards. Ninety one or Route Two.
There's probably. Space on the other side, still maybe, not a lot. But in terms of just the, the. The density maximum possible. Each of these eight lots is about twenty thousand square feet. So a hundred and sixty thousand. Square feet for the lot divided by. Four thousand per unit is. Forty units.
So he could get in what he's proposing there in the land area, yep.
Just wonder why he didn't. Then, then what, the goal was to max this one out, I'm wondering why they didn't max this one out too. Is this the type of person that, are you familiar with this owner?
Yes.
Been on work in town before?
Yes, he's a. He's done some stuff in town, developments and it's been a long time.
So he builds it, he doesn't just permit it and flip it there?
No, no, he, he.
What else has he built in town?
It's been a long time, actually, I'd have to look that up, but he's been in town for a long time and has done a few developments. I know, oh, even before me, actually. So I, I know Jeff was, um, uh, putting out the idea of maximizing. The housing stock that could be added there. I, I have a similar feeling, is that a general sense of the board as far as feedback?
I'd like to see mixed, but I, I agree with, you know, maximizing.
Some of the two options, I'm, me personally, I'm much more in favor of the residential complex.
Multifamily there, yeah.
Just based on the. The items that were brought up about maximizing square footage and. And the housing stock in town, I think that. Satisfies that much better and kind of fits the area of. But I would be interested to see what a cluster development would look like there, if there was option three, you know, that, that might. Way on my opinion.
Are there any further comments or do you feel like you have what you need? Eric, some feedback?
I have some good feedback to give. And then, thank you very much.
You can invite him to come back and show us future. Iterations of just for comments, because I'd love to. Rip into the design too, but. Say that, I know this is all conceptual right now.
That's great, I, I have some feedback to give him, so let's check back. In our plans. All right. Okay, so the next item is a broad one, it's planning boards, priorities and initiatives, um. I suggested this because we're pretty much a new board, which is great, it's a lot of opportunity to. Um, to think about how we want to focus on things, as I had, uh, mentioned. Um, last month, when you look at what the planning board's job description, so to speak, is. Um, we obviously review, decide and make recommendations on development proposals. But our second purpose is long range planning and some of that includes on the website, preparing plans of the resources, possibilities and needs of the city. Again, very broad. So I want to have a chance to kind of at least start a conversation about. Um, what people are seeing as, uh, uh, possible areas to focus on. And, you know, tonight's discussion doesn't have to be exhaustive or comprehensive and just trying to again seek consensus, um. Uh, does anyone have somewhere?
That was one of my, one of my questions. How do we know what's good for the city? Do we have a joint meeting with zoning and business development, sit down together, all talking, floating dollars? How do we know? What's good for the city?
Eric, uh, a good way to indicate how we know is, um, through the effort of preparation of the master plan. It involves many stakeholders, many people. Given their opinions about the vision, goal and objectives of the city agree. So. The planning board is, is the entity that implements that plan as well as others, but planning board takes the lead on it because. They're the ones that adopt master plans.
So we're after the fact.
Yes, so the master plan is twenty fourteen, we have done a two chapter update, land use and natural resources, historic cultural resources. But that is the document to look at to say, here's the vision of the city at least. Twenty fourteen and moving forward, and even now, these two chapters, it's kind of refreshed.
Right. So that was one thing, thing, Eric, that was one thing I was going to suggest we focus on in the next few months. This is the original map plan, this is the, um. Uh, draft of, that the Conway School students did in collaboration with a group from the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee. Uh, which has been, uh, in existence since ten years since, um, that plan went into effect and, um, so this is a brand new, uh, initiative. Had a lot of public input on this and the process right now is that the, um, S G I C. Is going through it and making some recommendations on adjustments and then it would eventually come to the planning board. I know, Eric, you were saying you'd share the draft with everyone, did that happen? I didn't know.
Sorry, had.
Yeah, the draft of the, um, of the, um. That the Conway School had done.
Had announced it already.
Okay. I assume people would be, I think people would indicate they were interested, look at that, it's, it's still in draft form, we're still working on it. Um, on, and then would be, you know, presenting it to the planning board for further, uh, consideration and could be.
What is sustainable?
Oh, sustainable greenfield is the name of the master plan, so it's the master plan implementation committee, I see.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a document that we can review, look at. And say, okay, we've done this X, Y and Z, we need to do A, B and C or something, that's, that's our goal and we have our. Meetings, our people come into the. Group for us, we look at the plans, like this does fit, this doesn't fit, it can fit if we do this, it won't fit if we do that, so that's pretty much our goal or our function.
Well, also we can take things from, you know, the master plan and try to focus on them or, you know, um.
Encourage them?
Yes, yeah, um. So those two new chapters, housing and, um, natural, historic and cultural resources are the ones we'd be looking at, um. The refreshed, uh, versions, um. But, um, there are other things we could be looking at, I, I was wondering as far as saying we're talking about housing. And there's already a housing study underway, so, um, that would be something that, uh. I don't know if that's something the planning board can have input into or be tapped into what's going on with that or what's, what's the timeline for that?
Very good question of how the planning board can give some input. That's Jeff's end direction.
She doesn't represent any of those meetings, like trying to put my other hat on.
Uh, we're, that process is in the very early stages, which just involves talking to stakeholders, we had a conversation recently. Um, just doing some basic data analysis to kind of set the stage for community conversation. To try to set, I mean, it may always set the direction. For future housing in town and, and come up with the strategies needed to achieve that, so the planning board would be part of the, the toolkit. And often the planning board is one of the sounding boards too. So if you ask. Eric's department to get on the list, I, if I were doing that, I would not, I would refuse myself from the planning board. Discussion and just present it as the consultant. And, uh. Can gather your feedback and, and then we have a sub consultant on our team who knows more than I do about just innovative. Regulatory strategies that might be on the table. To. Well, our zoning is already pretty progressive, but there are different policy ideas. You know, financing ideas that, that might be, that, that we can maybe bring to bear. A, a lot of times there's. Plenty of demand for housing, that's not the problem here. But it costs too much to build and or there's just not the right places available. To put it, or the zoning doesn't quite allow it, other places may not here. So what do we need to change about the regulatory? Landscape so that people can do, the developers can do what the community wants. And then maybe that's private developers, maybe it's nonprofit developers, maybe it's a housing authority or a joint venture of some sort. It's what do we need, what do we want? And then how do we make it easier to deliver that? Makes sense.
Eric, I wondered, um, if you could, um, refresh my memory, we've also had a number of, um. Processes that we've, uh, worked on in the last few years with, with the assistance of Furco. Um, and. I, I lose track sometimes of what, what we had talked about potentially doing and what we actually have done, um, like low impact developments, uh, I worked on cluster development just recently. Um, we did that, and, uh, are there other things that were still kind of in the pipeline, uh, that we've talked about from your recollection?
So I was going to bring this up, and same as the priorities and initiatives is that. We did have the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. Completely revamp our cluster open space development arms, they did that last year. And we were gonna go through the process to get it adopted, but it's brand new administration, a brand new city council. So we pulled it back and just did the minor amendments that recently went through. So we need to think about this and, and get it through, but this is not going to be an easy one to get through to city council, there'll be some education involved and. It, it's a, it's a major change and a lot of language in there and, uh, based on just the minor language we put in front of recently. It's, it'll be an effort to get it adopted and go through the process.
So how do we help with that? At the planning board?
So as a planning board, um. The work has already kind of been done because you went to, you worked with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, what the board did. Finalized the actual language, so that was most of the work the planning board did, but it could still be involved by going to the city council meetings. Answering questions or making statements about it. Uh, the education piece, I'm not sure, I think I'm going to have staff at the Franklin Regional Council of Governments that did the actual. Revisions to present it, so it's an outside insult presenting to city council. I, what, what was done.
And, and also several members here weren't involved in that process.
Exactly, it had such turnovers.
Such turnovers. So that would be good to, um, provide that.
Yeah, so what I can do is definitely email the board. The latest update, uh, the latest revisions that we need to get through the adoption process.
You send us what the current is, where you send that so we know what the options may be. So to understand why there might be some resistance.
Hey, you know, that's hard to say, I just know from the minor stuff that you put through that shit, it seems like you should have just sailed through with no resistance, it barely went through, so I mean, something like this, I'm just imagining it's going to be. Tough to get it through because they, they, they want to understand every word, understand the whole thing. Sometimes just big concepts, so that should be enough for them to understand and say, okay, it's a good idea, that's adopted, but. They want to know every single detail, understand every single thing as much as we do, so it's time to get educated.
Right, no, I, I agree with you, it's not necessarily. Over resistance, it's more just.
Understanding.
Yeah, it's under, if you haven't been. You know, deeply involved in it, I think having the Furco presentation is a great idea, much, much more effective and authoritative, um. And, uh.
I thought that was a good idea, what you said, George, those were the two things I had, this was cluster open space development and of course the two chapters with the board work through it, finalizing the nightmare. It's so funny because I thought, oh, that's done, cluster, oh, no, it isn't. We're just recommending. We got that, the process of adoption.
The other, uh, another big issue, um, that is, um.
Oh, George, oh, for a bit, please, sorry. So I'm not sure, because you, you asked a specific question about it, the other thing that the Franklin Regional Council of Governments was going to do for us, and we asked them to do it, are its local technical systems?
Yes.
Is the Green River corridor overlay. They, they used the hydrogeologist and came up with a new regulatory tool of the Green River. That is based on more reality than some arbitrary two hundred foot buffer zone from a, from a river or. Of the, or like a floodplain zone that is, hasn't been updated since nineteen eighty. And things like that, so they have this new Green River corridor that has exactly where it should be regulated boundaries. And that'd be a first, because most communities just use what the state requires to be regulated. Wetlands, floodplains, things like that, this would be actually taking a brand new study and using it in our zoning as regulatory tool. For development along the Green River.
So more accurate for boundaries.
More accurate boundaries that reflect reality in the current climate scenario.
What's the, what is the? Result of that, does that tend to keep? Things further from the river or allow you to go closer where it makes sense, or that what it's about, it's about the?
It's about both, uh, using, you know, using that. Corridor and the, the extra specifics about it, the hydrogeology and everything about it to determine. What areas need to be preserved to prevent flooding and erosion downstreams. And, and or maybe development offices along the river.
So they're in process on that and?
No, they have, um. Let me get an update on that.
Okay, but they'd be coming to us at some point?
I'm not sure that they've started this yet, I can't remember the latest communication with them.
Okay.
They tend to be a little. Not so tight when they do this local technical systems, uh, at least for a few, but they always get us the end product in the end and they're very good, but sometimes they start late.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just one with the timeline.
Yeah, I have to follow up on that.
If their grant expires in June, then it'll be soon, right?
Yes, exactly. They have actually, I mean, it's supposed to end in December, so this year's technical system, they have till December thirty first. So let me get an update from them, the Green River Board.
Another area, it's a big thing with the, uh, downtown, uh, revamping that's in process is about the parking, and I know we had a. Uh, very involved, very, uh, excellent, a lot of us thought parking study that was done. And. Didn't know, um, I've heard reference to that, uh, like on the council in some discussions. Uh, but I know it's also, it's a, it's a touch point for a lot of people, especially, um, business folks downtown, it can be really good, you know, knee jerk reactions. Who's parking and, and, and that study was really impressive, I thought, as far as it's, you know. Uh, drawing on, uh, experience of other communities and, and it was, it was counterintuitive, a lot of it as far as how, how you would apply. Uh, cost parking, it would be free and stuff like that, so I thought, I thought it was very. Just from a point of view of what we're, you know, the, the city's needs and opportunities, that sounds like, boy, that's a big one. You know, to really help, you know, make the, and so I don't know what the planning board could do with regard to that or anything, but I just wanted, just want to throw it out.
One thing, there is specific recommendations in that parking study about zoning.
Yeah.
And that's something that the board could tackle.
Sure.
Uh, the economic, community and economic development, um, department. Has taken a look, uh, it was under M G Adams that the study got going, so her staff, she's gone, retired, but her staff is still taking the lead in implementing that plan. Christian from her office, Amy's office now, is doing that. So he's been doing a good job, actually, new sign is in other areas, new pricing mechanisms to implement the plan. Uh, but he did recommend some zoning changes.
Okay.
And there was something in the master plan that we never tackled. It, which was looking at parking.
Maximals?
Maximum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and taking a holistic look at parking, because parking's hours, too much parking. Uh, we did do some minor changes, like changing the, uh, parking space for dwelling unit from two to one, which is good. But that was about it, there was one other land use category where the parking is changed because it made sense, but how to do the libraries. But there are other, we could look at the entire parking ordinance and probably reduce parking.
Reduce parking?
Reduce parking, it's, the world is going away from. I mean, it's going to take a long time, but it's eventually getting away from gas, I mean, vehicles, so.
Well, Jeff was just trying to shoehorn that concept in with the, the Starbucks, just, you know, last month, uh, you know, as a, as a specific application of that.
And they're going to build as much parking as they think the market needs. And many times the ordinance requires they build more than they want to build, and it reduces the amount of density you can achieve, it creates more. Purbius surface, it makes things look uglier. So let them have discretion, as long as we feel comfortable with the parking minimums or, I mean. If we feel like there's enough parking to accommodate. The typical use and it's not going to create a burden on the rest of town. You should let them move forward with whatever they think makes sense. And, and also take advantage of the fact that there's tons of available parking already in the public domain, especially downtown, and people can walk and all these other things. So I would agree, that's it, we could incorporate, that's the sort of thing we could incorporate. And that's a. Attitude, it's a position that's been taken by the town. That we can, and use to inform our judgments when we're doing official business that has, that involves parking too. It gives us some direction on that topic.
And like you say, that's, you know, for ten years, that's been one of the guideline or, or, you know, directions, it's been encouraged to. It's been encouraged to.
Just on the parking subject, I was at the presentation of the parking study. Is anyone, is any board member not familiar with the parking study? Because maybe we could send it around or you could access it somehow.
Forward the whole board.
That was great. That was so.
I think we're gonna have a lot of reading.
That was so impressive. A lot of us there saying.
A lot of homework.
I used to work at the firm that did that study. I wasn't involved in that.
It was a really interesting study because they actually. Made, they created data by doing observations on the ground in Greenfield. So it's very factual. And, you know, they brought to bear their skills in that area, so.
And the experience of other communities and how it's worked. Yeah, it wasn't just theoretical. One other, if it's okay to move on, another thing is, is I've, we've been talking about this as a ward. Not with you folks, but as a ward since two thousand nineteen, and this is about the major development review ordinance. And so in two thousand nineteen, it was the issue with the library concern, the library wouldn't get, funding wouldn't get approved. And so there was a compromise deal, whatever, it's called various things, where there were two zoning changes made. So that the library would be passed. One of those was the elimination or reduction of the French King overlay district. It was actually, wasn't totally eliminated.
Much reduced, why bother that?
Yeah, and and that's the one I think that got the most public attention because it's a concrete, it's a location, it's an area. The other one was dramatic changes to the major development review ordinance. And those changes were significant and they were. Just kind of worked out between a couple of people, this counselor and the council president at the time. And it was acknowledged by the council president. These weren't based on any, any metrics or any comparisons. It was just kinda.
Somebody wanted.
It was, right, it was a deal. So. So intimately since then, the planning board voted. A negative recommendation about the M D R changes, four to one at that time. And the council approved it, but I think it was one, one vote against. And so the board has off and on, we've talked about this idea, you know, should we revisit this? Because it just seemed like, as I said at the time, in our deliberations, it might have been good politics, but it was more planning. And so we never really got into it. It didn't seem like a top priority. It's, you know, political, you know, landmine in a way. But it has come up recently because there were two projects that if the. Traffic trigger hadn't been changed, it was changed from one thousand, it had originally been five thousand, five hundred, I'm sorry. It moved to a thousand and then in two thousand nineteen went from one thousand to three thousand. And for car trips and two projects, the Aldies and the Starbucks. Would have come under major development review if it had been a thousand or even if it was only a two thousand. But because it was a three thousand, they didn't fall into that. And so that's gotten a lot of attention. And so there were a couple of attempts to reduce that particular aspect of it to. Two thousand, the city council initiated that and that was not approved by the council. And then it was a citizen petition and that was also not approved by the council with various, various perspectives on it. You know, some people were, well, a deal's a deal kind of thing, and you know, they were involved in that vote. Or, you know, some were just not sure if this would be anti-business and. And then there was one, Council Bullock, at the most recent thing, they changed their vote to in favor of it. But said it would be, they would feel more comfortable if it was coming from the planning board rather than coming from a citizen petition. And I know that from my perspective, that's just one metric. There were other things that were changed. And there was a whole section that was deleted. So I wanted to suggest that, and another, another, I'll just add, another concern people had was it was reactive to a particular development. And we didn't make that proposal, so it could well have been, people were trying to, you know, get that in to block and develop or. I don't know if they block it, but to have it be considered under major development view, which Eric had pointed out when he spoke to the council last time. Nothing, no proposal has ever been denied because it went through major development. It's only been adjusted to give us more leverage to adjust it in accordance with the, you know, the, what we benefit the the community. So I want to suggest we have kind of a measured, reasoned, you know, non-specific to any project. Overview of the M D R and its history and see if we have any recommendations to make as a board. So I want to suggest that.
I misunderstood the history that you just went over. I thought I remembered that the board, the planning board voted on the M D R change. And sent it to the city council. Is that not true? It was a citizen.
Yours was referring to the original.
Original one was 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 initiated by the council. And the board, that was to change the numbers and make it, well, less less stringent. And the planning board voted a negative recommendation. Most recently, you know, both the council initiated one and the citizen initiated one came before us. And we both times unanimously were in favor of going from three thousand to two thousand. And in fact, the fact that we gave that recommendation is what would allow it to come back. Because otherwise it would have had to wait two years to come back because the planning board was supportive of it. It can, that particular one could come back.
So is it a concern that the changes have pretty much made the major development board ineffective because it's not seeing anything? So that level of review is not taking place?
Yeah, in in the sense of these two things, they would have been, they would have fallen under the major development view based on traffic generation.
Is there a statutory reason why traffic generation has to be the triggering?
It's not the only one.
No, there's a list of five things that triggers M D R, like, like I mentioned here, fifty or more dwelling units being proposed.
And those are, those. Triggers are set by Greenfield, not by. The state or something. I I would say that the trigger should be more relevant to the things we care about. And traffic is, traffic generation is an arbitrary, so not to pick on Starbucks, but that's one of the most prominent parcels in the city. More people see that parcel than any other parcel, I would say, on a daily basis. That's much more relevant to the success of Greenfield than how many traffic trips Starbucks generates. So maybe we, you know, and triggers, is it all in a major corridor that's really important to things other than, traffic's never gonna be a problem in Greenfield, in my opinion. That it's not, that's not what we're here to regulate. I mean, maybe there's something we would wanna care about. I wouldn't, it's, it's the, you know, it's the look and feel of. The the major corridors, the, you know, the gateways into town, the, I I don't know the backstory between the, behind Town Fair Tire, for example, but the fact that. They didn't have to put a bunch of trees in the parking lot because certain things weren't triggered. And we should reset the rules so that we can control the things that really matter and people care about. So you can't get around it just because you hired the right traffic consultant to point to the right volume of.
You're implying putting more conditions on something for trial, like a traffic, there's a residential area and you have two thousand trips all of a sudden, that's an issue. But if it's a commercial area, two thousand trips is not a problem, something like that or?
I just don't care about trips at all. It's it's more, is it on Main Street? If it had three trips, but it's an ugly building, like we don't want an ugly building that damages the character of Greenfield. So just rethink the criteria by which we decide whether or not it's worthy of.
Yeah, so it sounds like giving a fresh look at this is something that would, the board would support.
I was just gonna make a comment about this two projects that would have been, you know, thankfully is a tip project and D O T is. Doing improvements along that whole area. So it worked out and that's the case of all these. Didn't need the track study, D O T is on it.
There was one other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention is, is I just was contacted within the past couple of weeks. By someone who is a consultant with the American Farmland Trust. And you had, this had gone through you, Eric. So this person was saying, I'm getting in touch about farmland in Greenfield. Actually got my name from Jamie Potter, who is with the American Farmland Trust and was a former planning board member. And they work to help towns certify their locally important farmland. This initiative broadens farmland owners eligibility for farmland protection programs. To certify the locally important farmland in Greenfield, all you would need to do is let me know if you'd like to pursue it. Then we draw up a document listing all the locally important farmland soils in the town. And the town official or board chair signs off on the document.
How's that help? Page from the federal government?
This is all I know. I don't know if you know more about this, Eric, or not, but.
No, they do a lot of research on it, no.
Yeah, and I haven't had a chance to talk about it. I was hoping to do that today before. So this sounds. It's the American Farmlands Trust.
I'm on Google. Certifying locally important farming.
That's the project. So I wanted to bring this to the board. I didn't want, you know, act independently on this, even if I couldn't. Chair, I've learned from, you know, my experience in the co-op that I'm. Go by the model of servant leadership, so I wanted to get some guidance from the board. We could pursue this. I can certainly, you know, contact her to get more information, but I didn't know. It sounds like something we'd wanna pursue just to get more information.
Are they proposing identifying farms or?
Certified, like, Bratinsky's Farm is certified as a farm, but what does that really mean?
They're saying locally important farmland soils.
That's a, or is it more identified places where there's good soil, but it's not a farm? And say that's a place where someone should do some agriculture.
No, I think that's what it is. It's, it's, the state already identifies prime agricultural soils and soils of state significance. So those are already identified. This is additional soils that could be used for agriculture that haven't been. Identified labels, shown on a map.
What are you ready to go to the state for that, though? Check us out again?
I think it because of the master plan, it's heavily saying, let's protect our farmland and, you know, it just about everything we do, it's all about protecting farmland too. That it would be a good idea to know about these additional type soils that could be impacted with development. Just knowing, just having the map and at least having some information going to make the decisions would be useful.
There was no reference to any cost for this or anything.
No, I know there was a cost and it showed a map of Western Mass communities and most of them in surrounding Greenfield have been certified.
So far, eighty-five Massachusetts towns have certified their locally important farmland.
And most of them are in Western Massachusetts.
Okay, what happens once we certify, once we get the quote unquote certified, it takes our purview to do anything with it. Now it's now it's a farmer.
No, 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 it's just labeling it. There's no regulatory authority over it or.
Could be used to stop any future. If someone's, if someone in the community like, you know, finds it, it stands on this shot. This has been certified farmland, get that news.
I hear exactly what you're saying. That could very well happen.
What this says is this initiative broadens farmland owners eligibility for farmland protection programs.
For me, that's like.
As opposed to expanding what could be part. It'd be interesting to get more information.
And there is a a presentation on this, this attachment on the link on this email, so I can forward this email or you have it.
I had all forward that email because the presentation is great, all these questions were asked.
There's a ton of information on their website.
I'll email the presentation.
And it's also in keeping with, you know, the, one of the land use, so it's one of the chapters that was just.
George, on the major development review, what was the, what's the action item there? Is that just, for now, we just. Are saying we wanna talk about it and then it goes on the future agenda and then we, you can talk about it?
Yeah, I just wanted to get kind of a list of things.
A list of things. What I'll do is generate a list and give it to the board. Here's what we talked about as priorities and then you can further refine it or just start moving. Take an action on whatever one of the items.
I mean, obviously, the new chapters would be a bit delayed just because it's going through the list of the S G I C mail. So we're, we're, you know, making some changes.
Do we have a, is there like a repository of other communities that have M D R language that? We can kind of look at?
I've done a lot of research on that, several mass planners, mass planners listserv is a. Just use the right of this server for all planners. You can ask questions and other all the planets are up the state answers, but help you answer your question.
Didn't get much response.
No, I did it twice and I only got a total of eight responses. I've been doing it mass planners twice. And none of the language married Greenfield except one, and I think the two towns got it from the same place or the same consultant wrote it, the identical language almost. Georgetown and Greenfield. Georgetown is only eight thousand people roughly, thirty-five hundred people. Greenfield's seventeen thousand five hundred, much bigger. So I'm surprised a community like Georgetown has M D R regulations, but they do. A lot of communities regulate things in different ways, like. Great Barrington, they don't have M D R, but they say you can't build a store bigger than thirty thousand square feet anywhere in a city or something like that. So they regulate development in different ways. Greenfield does it through M D R.
And our M D R started in early nineties?
Nineties, I'd say. That's a good, they actually, it could have been eighty-nine.
So what is the, so the the master plan twenty fourteen, it's been updated in certain, or is it being updated?
The two chapters were updated by the Conway School, but, you know, they're students. So we're gonna tweak it through the committee and then the planning board will tweak it and then we'll officially adopt it.
So there hasn't been official new chapters?
No, 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 no. The the master plan is a planning board document. What we did in two thousand fourteen, we ran it by the mayor and the city council, but that's more of a courtesy. We're wanting to get by and they don't, the city council is not to approve it, that's a planning board document.
It would make sense, I think, to talk about the major development review in, through the lens of. Master plan or vice versa, because we we need to, what are we trying to accomplish for the master plans? And then how do we design the tools so we can do that better?
There's one thing about the twenty fourteen master plan that that could have been better and, you know, I thought they could have done a better job is that. We identified a goal, the business and action book, the tools, we accomplished that wasn't strong in play.
Any further thoughts on this broad topic or you can always revisit it, but we got quite a bit to.
I did like the idea of like, what do we want our. Community areas to look like. Yeah, I've driven up and down the East Coast a few times now. And, you know, McDonald's and a Chick-fil-A all look like those businesses. And recently I went down to, we visited Hilton Head Island. Amazingly enough, their McDonald's does not look like the McDonald's. It fits the characteristic of the neighborhood that it was in. And I'm sure that was, you know, legislated that way or guided that direction, but. Because it certainly didn't conform to the standard McDonald's box. But it does, you know, I live over by G C C. And travel the area that Starbucks will be in a lot. And, you know, had we concentrated more on what those areas looked like, they may be more desirable to. The people that live here and may not draw as much attention to necessarily the car trips there because they don't. Look at a place or something of those, you know, criteria, just food for thought.
So design guidelines.
Yeah, what does the community wanna look like? And then how do we kind of keep things in?
The issue with design guidelines are coming up, come up many times since I've been in Greenfield. We just never got to it in that level of. Of oversight for development, but it's not about it. And many, many communities have a design group that actually. Like a planning board, but it's sound review group that reviews all projects for design, for the city's design guidelines.
Does that resonate with form-based code? I know we've talked about this so many times, I've never fully understood.
The design guidelines have been done for form-based code too, but personally, I think form-based code is something for bigger cities and.
Yeah, I quoted you about that. It came up. At another context, so.
Of course, big cities like Seattle and Portland, they have to consider things like that. They have no choice. So form-based code is huge, but, I mean, how many buildings get rebuilt in the downtown? Once in a while, a new building gets. And the only reason it's changed over time per fire chief is fires. Every building that's gone has been gone through a fire, not purposely demolished. So that dictates the landscape of our downtown more than. So that dictates the landscape of our downtown more than anything else with fires. But I think it's not so appropriate for Greenfield for form-based code. I don't know what Jeff thinks he's a planner.
I mean, form-based code is, I would kind of agree with Eric. It's overcompensating in a different direction. You're overcompensating for traffic and when hearing that, we're thinking. We're overvaluing specific design. Parameters at the expense of other things and and. Places that can afford to enforce things like that tend to be strong markets where people want to build and will tolerate a lot of. What they might call.
Interesting.
Yeah, so we we might not have the luxury of.
Like like the example.
But it also is a very wealthy and McDonald's will do anything to be there. But I think there's things from form-based codes that we could identify as, you know, the handful of key things we would care about. Signage is is one and trees and pedestrian, like the public realm, but you don't have to go so far as to. Literally draw the volume of every building from all sides, regulate like that specifically.
Yeah, that was an old film. There's one other thing I promised Nancy Hazard had mentioned. She asked about, she knew you were talking about properties and initiatives and. Do you think it's the time is right to propose an ordinance that all new landscaping in Greenfield is native plants? Somewhere real did this five years ago. Yeah, native plants as opposed to.
I wish I slept with Dex. I could not buy a white birch from anybody in the whole town. I want to buy a white birch.
Is a white birch not native?
They don't like because it bugs.
But you know, it's huge, native pollinate plants and native plants. Personally, I like not native plants too, but uh. In terms of ecology, I guess that's what she's thinking about and so that's.
Interesting. I mean, obviously just did. With an example, a singular example was with the Starbucks plan and that was through Nancy's organization and condition.
Well, of course, I'd like to get these uh aggressive plants from India. Like we write down, obviously the damn vine on all the trees everywhere and that kind of stuff. So if we only do something that's not typical, then we don't risk. Introducing something, so I have no problem with that at all.
That resonate with folks.
Yeah, I think we should discuss it.
Nice.
Does the planning board get involved in, someone mentioned city services, uh like. Sewer coverage. Or is that more because it's an infrastructure need, it's based on? What the city can provide.
Again, I'm gonna go back to impact fees and of the way other areas of the country deal with that. Same person that gave this month two thousand per kid in his school impact fee also had to pay into this. Infrastructure impact fee to help expand the city's network of utilities. And so that's how they pay for and expand. That's how it works in Massachusetts. It doesn't work that way. You could be a. A guy at the very end of the road and you want to do your development and you have to pay for the entire upgrade yourself. To connect into the city sewer and water. There is no partnership with the city. Sometimes the city will do public private partnership and help. If you really want to see development in there, it can partner with it, help with infrastructure, but usually the infrastructure falls on the developer.
That would tell the city property, it's a time to become, once he makes his connection, does now maintain and oversee by the city or is. Is to maintain helps.
The city takes it over and maintains it.
Peter, was your question more like resiliency of infrastructure?
Uh I mean, I think that could be part of a broader discussion, but yeah, potential. Expansion, that kind of. I don't know, I mean. Does that, does that play into that? The role of the board.
I think the city, I think it's going to fall on the Department of Public Works, but if they did want to do, take a whole look at the city and say, you know, where can we expand? Water sewer, where's then planning department would definitely planning board be helping involved in.
I don't remember it coming up.
Yeah, it's never come up since thousand years, seventeen years. It is what it is now.
No, they stopped expanding the sewer system in town like forty-five something years ago.
Yeah, exactly.
I think you. They couldn't maintain what they already had.
One of those things that we're not going to get more highways, we're not going to get more sewer lines. I I think that the to me, the best. Connection between our work and infrastructure is to make sure we're making the most of the infrastructure that we have. So compare. Land uses with where the sewer pipes are. Is there a place that is underutilized that has more capacity? Let's focus development there and is there a place that's kind of running out? Maybe take it away from there so we're not. Stressing the system. We're just trying to balance the.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I worked in other areas of the country, so I'll bring all this stuff up, but it's not relevant here. So yeah, I mean, the other parts of the country I've worked on in Texas. Would do with annexation. The city actually annexes more land as it expands and it has to plan for its infrastructure. It's an expansion through impact reason doing that, but but it's not like that here as Jeffrey was saying.
But we do have a good amount of water and. Infrastructure to work with, so making sure we're making the most of it.
And out there, they're, you know, they're not the epitome of smart growth, you know, they're expanding, expanding.
Right, right, right.
You know, you want to concentrate development where it already is, where the sewer utilities are already here protecting, you know, a lot of areas or other areas.
Any last thoughts? We have a good list of things to focus on.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a guess common thread and I had some questions about this, but. Seems like we might be interested like as we grow our knowledge and kind of um get more experience. Uh with, we might be interested in liaising with other bodies, like talking to. At different experts and um other people in the city, other bodies in the city as well. Um and I know that there are representatives of the planning board. On different bodies, could you just refresh my memory what those are and who they are?
Right, well, um uh.
SGIC, right?
Yes, the Master Plan Implementation Committee and I'm the rep on on that.
Okay.
And the um Community Preservation Committee. Um and are you on that?
No, that's Amy.
No, Amy's on that. Thank you. And right, and she was gonna, she can't even though she's an alternate.
Yes.
So it's okay, that's right. We don't have any another entity that we have a representative on to.
No. Was on the traffic commission. Is that one, is that fit in the category of what you're talking about?
I mean, it probably would be good to have a board member there, but they they typically don't and ever since I've been here.
So for for those two I mentioned, it's in the charter.
It's in the charter.
There there would be a planning board round, but I don't know of any.
I don't know of any other ones.
It's interesting because there are so, there are other bodies that might be relevant to the planning board that we could connect with.
We did have um. Uh Charles was on the library. It wasn't, it wasn't a requirement, I don't think, but he. I re-served on the library.
And occasionally when there's big building projects, if the new fire station, new library, there's planning board rep on that. And Charles Roberts was on the library.
Right.
We, who was on the fire station? Do you know? I don't think there was one. I was on it as a planning, okay. Really attended him because of these other feeds.
So in terms of the boards, the planning board's representatives on other boards, when is that renewed? Or is it just ongoing? Like you'll, you're continuously going to be the representative or do we have to reappoint you?
There, if it, those are at the appointment of the chair. So it's not a board decision.
Oh, I see.
But whoever's the chair and so that could be changed anytime by the chair.
So just specific committees or boards you thought we should be involved in?
No, I didn't have any in mind, um but I just thought there is definitely an area where we could think about.
And we did, a long time, we would have kind of cross pollination with the CBA, so.
Yeah.
A planning board member might attend CBA meetings. Uh so that is certainly something that someone can take on if they want to.
Okay.
Hasn't happened since Linda Smith, which is a while ago.
Yeah.
Rory Cowdier, Tom McLown from the CBA coming to the planning board meetings, but they used to come to every single planning board and vice versa.
I went to the last CBA meeting and it was pretty lively.
Come to the sixties. Great, thank you for considering Nancy's suggestion.
Yep, thanks for bringing it to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh back on liaising with other bodies, when I heard about the Green River Corridor overlay. It reminded me of the Conservation Commission, so. Um if that, if we do review that or, you know. Um if it comes before the board, be interesting to liaise with the Conservation Commission about that.
Yeah, no, definitely. I think it's part of that process uh we go through and attempt to adopt that. We have to take the temperature of the whole city and city councils because it's 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 another set of regulations. So a lot of people are against further regulation. Some are not in this particular, what is the purpose of the regulation that matters to them too. But some people in general, just it doesn't matter what, if it's protecting a river or this and that and helping downstream, they just more regulations stopping development, they're they're against it. So it's gonna be an education process for that one for sure, but the commission would be definitely involved with cost basis case.
Any last thoughts? Should we go on to our exciting approval not required? So that's the next agenda item, approval not required for lots at Twenty Four Homestead Avenue. It looks like this is just a strip of land nine feet wide. Being transferred from one property to the other.
Perfect.
So this is parcel A right here. That's a nine-foot strip right here and it mentions where. Parcel A to be combined with land of the Traver family, so. So it looks like currently their driveway is split uh between the two properties. And this is the, just a.
Exactly, so just for Victor's um education, if you don't know about A and R plans, you may know about them. Approval not required is what A and R stands for. Again, it's a Massachusetts thing. There's no other state in the entire country that allows A and Rs, it's a bad thing. But in Massachusetts, it's allowed. So theoretically, if you have a mile of frontage on a road. You'd be built whatever fifty, a hundred, a hundred different house lots on that would know subdivision proof. There's no other state in the country that. So but this in Massachusetts, A and R plans. You have to meet two criteria to be, have to be endorsed by the planning board. And that is, you gotta meet the frontage requirement of the district in which it's located. And practical access, so there can't be something preventing you from entering the lot like a cliff or wetland or something like that. So this meets the requirement of the frontage for both lots in this district. So a lot of times the board wants to know, oh, why are they doing this? And that's good to know and stuff, but it it's it's irrelevant. They don't do this because it's, it's why they're doing is irrelevant. It doesn't meet two criteria, you gotta.
And we don't vote to approve it, we vote to endorse.
Endorse.
Yeah, and I was just, I was just, um it was humorous, the the comment uh that uh. Partial A is not to be considered a separate building lot. It would be quite a tiny house on a nine-foot wide.
But it's good though, because they they put that language in there so that.
Yep.
It doesn't create a setback issue, a side setback issue with the. You're only eighteen, twenty.
No, it meets the uh the requirement. And actually, even if it didn't, um there's another point I was gonna point out. Sometimes they put it on themselves here, but I still stand to do that and see that most plants don't have this language in there, so that's why we have a stamp and we put it on. And it says, planning board endorsement under the subdivision control law is not a determination of conformance with zoning regulations. So if it meets the two try here, try criteria and setbacks are not met or anything else, you still have to endorse.
That is interesting.
Interesting, yes.
I'm gonna go to ZBA for the other thing. If some setback wasn't met, ZBA would get involved.
If they were going to build a new structure and they couldn't meet the setback, you need twenty percent upper bound with special permit, CBA or variance, CBA.
So is there a motion to endorse this? That's just.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? And then they want to make the accompanying motion?
Yes, I would like to motion that um George as chair be able to sign on behalf of the board to endorse. A and R plan.
There a second?
Second.
And discussion, I'll just tell you, it it otherwise we would all five need to, and there are multiple um copies that need to be signed. We used to pass around the table. I said, oh, we can just have the chair too.
Can we do that all the time? Because we had to come in for the the Starbucks one.
No, that this is just for the A and R.
Special permit, uh deciding you, you acquire super majority, so four, you have to have four signatures.
Yeah, and this is so weird because it's, we're doing so little and yet there's so much paperwork, it was like multiple. Plastic copy and.
Big binders, the thickest thing that I put in there is on A and Rs and there's so much language on there, it's so complicated. But they try to get through some of these. Uh land surveyors, but so far we've been lucky now, everyone for this board, except for one Charles pointed out, it's been pretty straightforward.
Oh, right, right. Uh okay, so we have a motion and a second for the chair to sign. All in favor? Uh unanimous?
Thank you.
Uh board and staff reports, we don't have uh Amy here for report from the CPC. I know they're. Moving along with their recommendations. I don't know where where they stand at this point.
Um they stand.
As far as going before the council. Um for the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee, uh we already talked about the Conway chapters. And also wanted to share that the um one uh recommendation that had been in the original master plan was to form. An open space committee. There's already a recreation commission and there's an open space, was it open space and recreation plan? That's done every five years?
Seven years.
Seven years. Um but it was suggested in there to to form an open space committee. A series of mayors has declined to do that, I think partly because they were worried how you populate that, you know, one more uh committee. And and uh mayor disorder similarly declined to start one. But at the committee level, we suggest, well, how about if a subcommittee of the SGIC. Be formed as an open space committee just to have somebody focused on that. This is already a recommission and the mayor was supportive of that and so we just as a body um. Weeks ago, we uh were uh voted to start that, so just wanted to update the. What about that? And it kind of dovetails nicely with the uh land use chapter being updated.
And what is the purpose of the open space?
To to look into ways that, you know, the very thing we were talking about with the, you know, farmland kind of thing, ways to consider open space that wouldn't be. You know, focused on as far as recreation, something like that.
Massachusetts had an open space uh tax and all that kind of thing. I did help this place plan in New Jersey. I was on the floor and I. Did an open space plan there. So I'm just curious.
So uh but we um we have an open space and recreation plan. It's called, and it'd be seven years, it allows it to apply for grants, like a park grant. That did a skateboard park.
You don't have, you don't have green acres here in Massachusetts. Green acres, if a town designates a piece of property as green acres, then it's locked in with the state, the state kind of like takes it and says, hey, green acres. Can't do anything with it. It's gonna stay forever, green acres sort of stuff. That was part of the whole thing was to try and figure out if we wanted to go green acres, we didn't want to go green acres, how to develop all that.
That's that's unique, yeah, it's interesting.
Uh any other comments or next meeting date is?
Uh June, what's first, Thursday, June?
The sixth.
Six.
Six.
All right, uh is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Seconded.
You all in favor? Uh unanimous?